All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'll call us to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the roll, please.
Trustee Kajami?
Here.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Printhee?
Here.
Trustee Slater?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Topic?
Here. Next on our agenda is public comment. I think most people know the rules on public comment. You can have up to five minutes. I'd ask you to try to keep it shorter, please, if you could. We have a number of people here and a number of items to talk about. So whoever's ready, please go ahead and begin commenting.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Trotloch, and I've been a resident of Downers Grove for more than thirty years. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the library referendum question currently being considered by the village council and the library. She's a saint. I'm happy with the library the way it is being run now, and I see no reason or benefit for making this change. However, since the idea of electing library trustees is under consideration, I do have more to say. First, this idea is a solution looking for a problem to solve. Again, in my opinion, the library functions well. Next, the library has experienced so much turmoil over the last three years. Why introduce a new potentially divisive issue now? As we have seen at council and tonight at this meeting, the proposal already is serving to divide the community. Further, the current process for selecting library trustees is inclusive. Anyone can apply to serve. Council members who have firsthand knowledge of the skills, passion, and expertise needed for public service determine the appointments and can work to ensure there is broad community representation. If the library is put under direct control of voters, there will be risks of localizes or interests overshadowing the needs of marginalized or underserved communities. A public vote might reflect the preferences of a particular demographic, leading to unequal access to resources. Not only would elections politicize the library, but not everyone has the time or financial ability to run for office. So even if they would be willing to serve, those who couldn't afford to run for office wouldn't be able to. Allowing local politics and voting to influence library services could lead to a situation where the library is used as a tool for partisan agendas, undermining its role as independent and inclusive space. And finally, the library and the village each have just completed comprehensive surveys of our community, during which, electing the library board was not great at all. In fact, in both surveys, the public was overwhelmingly complimentary of the library and its programming. So in that sense, the question has already been put to the public, and they have stated their resounding support for the way things are. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Edie Brainerd. "A lady does protest too much," he thinks, applies well here to everyone trying to convince us that we don't need an elected library board. Shakespeare nailed it. You know the feeling when someone or groups are trying too hard to convince you of something. You begin to suspect something's rotten in the state of Denmark. The repetition is just too much. A hundred-and-thirty-year history, an award-winning library, too expensive, not enough time. No, the time is now. Let the voters decide. The voters are paying for the $7 million budget they should get to elect the board. Speaking to the process of the appointment of board members, it's very opaque. The public does not know who the applicants are. The interviews are private. The public is in the total dark. You have to foil all that information, which I have done, but you shouldn't have to do that. And it's not an open process whatsoever when you don't know who's applied and you have to hope that you might get a call to be interviewed. So it's not open. Hinsdale, Westmont, Darien, Western Springs, all have elected library boards. It's not a novel concept. We're not reinventing the wheel here. "The library does protest too much," he thinks. Something is rotten in the state of Denmark. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jorge Moray. I've been a resident of Downers Grove for forty-nine years. I came here mainly to get information. I have very little information. I think the library is doing a wonderful service, as we've been doing that for the last forty-nine years. So in that sense, I don't see any reason for changing proceedings. I was at the meeting of the village council, and I did not hear a single good reason for changing the way things are done. So in that sense, I don't see why we should vote for the library board. If somebody has social vision, I would like to hear it. The fact that other libraries do it doesn't mean we should. It just means take the vote differently. And I don't know why they did it. Again, that's information that is not available to me, and I have not been able to say. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Noel Manley, native in Earlborough, Darien resident and resident of the White Earth University. I want to thank the board for not reading the Native Land Statement today. The land statement, at best, is a cherry-picked piece of history. It doesn't really delve into the true human relations of Native people, and anybody who's a true student of history knows that. My own people, the Ijibwe people, are range stretches from southern Ontario all the way through to western North Dakota. We've never fought a major war with the United States. We've never fought any wars with the French and the British. But what we did do is we prospered. We prospered on the fur trade. In the seventeenth to eighteenth century, our people engaged in trade with Europeans over what? Furs. Furs from what? A rodent, beavers. To Native people, beaver everywhere. Every lake, every stream, every river in the northern part of the United States has beavers. You can even find them right now down in the Illinois Fish and Canal. To handle those relations was transformative. Here you had people who were living in wigwams, whose walls were barely an eighth of inch thick, who are now trading with tools, metal ax heads, hammers, saws, and muskets. These are transformative tools that no longer allowed us to live in wigwams, but now we can live in lodges. It also allowed us to develop trade. And, unhappily, part of the checkered history of my own people has allowed us to become conquerors. We drove the Sioux out of Minnesota. There was a battle in 1759 called the Battle of the Corwin River, where we pushed the Santee Sioux out of central Minnesota and took it for our own. Now, you're not going to hear that in the land statement that the library states, but that's part of the disingenuous portion of that. It doesn't take into account the true history of the Native people. Now, in two weeks, on October 29th, it's going to be the 129th anniversary of the Wounded Knee massacre, which is the worst incident of relations between the United States and the Native people. Three hundred Sioux men were literally murdered. There's no way you can put a good spin on it. It was awful. It's things like that that need to be discussed, but now they have the emphasis of one group against another. Because history is not black and white. It is very gray. Because one thing my general education taught me is that you can't look at things in that perspective. So I just want to again thank you for retiring that statement. And in the future, if you do really want to resurrect it again, I would ask that more balanced view and balanced perspective be brought. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Laura Voice. I've been a resident of Downers Grove since 1985. And it strikes me that the first speaker said the reason that the library should not have an elected board is that it could become politicized. And the reason I'm in favor of a library board member being elected is that it has been politicized, and that's the whole problem. This library, over the last several years, spent over $157,000 to an equity consultant to communicate that our community is racist, which has never been the case. I've lived here since 1985. And I find it really interesting and disturbing that that's not recognized. So the need for balance is definitely there. The need for all community members to be served is there. The discussion around alleged book banning really relates to pornography in the library that hasn't been alleviated because the state and national are driving that. And what I'm concerned about, and I've raised my children, my children are all adults. What I'm concerned about is the children of this community being exposed to what they're being exposed to at this library. And unfortunately, it has become politicized to the point that Drankman Bingo was placed on the schedule as a program for children. And fortunately, it was canceled. And I was in favor of the cancellation of Drankman Bingo because I think there's no place for it in public library. So over the past few years, many issues have come up where there has been different points of view that must be addressed, that cannot be ignored. And there is definitely a need for voter input and voters' selection of the board members of this library in order to bring it back to where it should be, which is a neutral organization that serves the community of Downers Grove. $7 million is nothing to sneeze at. And the village council has pretty much sent the message to that they can't do anything to control the spending. And there has been reckless spending. The DEI spending was just one example. So I think this board would definitely benefit by becoming an elected body accountable to the voters of Downers Grove. So it's interesting that the same words are being used to express two very different points of view. But they do exist in this community, and we need to have accountability, and we need to have more meaningful input that actually leads to results. Where parents don't need to be concerned about their children coming to the library unsupervised, they don't need to be concerned about social work being hired, that has a completely different set of values, that are not what we're looking for in this community. That there's propaganda that's being pushed. The Illinois Library Association is a driver of that. And a lot of it has to do with state and national influence on this library. It is a blue state here in Illinois. But we do need balance, and we need voter input. So I'm in favor, very much in favor, of having an elected library board moving forward, allowing the village to proceed with the proposed advisory referendum. Getting input from the community is helpful to us all. Thank you.
Good evening. Kylie Spahn, twenty-year resident of Downers Grove. I apologize, I did not plan on speaking this evening, so I had not prepared something formal. But I would like to make some points. We have Noel Manley and Laura Voice, who are the co-chairs of the Bank Hill and Illinois Downers Grove organization. That organization has been designated a hate group.
By who?
They occupy the Southern Conference Hall Center.
Okay. Stop, stop, stop. Anybody who interrupts any of those who are speaking is going to be asked to leave, and we're going to shut down. Stop speaking when you're not up at the podium. I'm not tolerating it from anybody under any circumstances. No speaking if you're not at the podium. Now, if you're... I'm going to leave with that. Go ahead.
Noel Manley is also a resident of Darien, as he stated. He does not pay taxes in Downers Grove. He does not support financially our community through property taxes. So I really don't think he has an opinion when it comes to a referendum on our library. The other thing I would like to talk about is the fact that the village commissioners in favor of this proposal have not given one single reason as why this needs to occur. There has been no... It went from a motion to a first reading. There has been no proper policy and procedure happening here. Video gaming was two years of discussion before it went on as a referendum question. It did not go from motion to a first reading. So I think there is a lot of actions that are happening with our village council that are not in the best interest of our community or our library board. We have a nationally-recognized, award-winning, five-star-rated... This library is ranked in the top ten in the nation. This is like the jewel of our community. People like to talk about test scores when it comes to schools and how it boosts property values. This library boosts our property values. $7 million is really not that much when you look at the pension fund and the police fund, which are over $20 million of taxpayers' money. So if you're going to look at all these boards and commissions that are receiving money, start looking at everything, not just our $7 million that we get for our library. Because the services that we provide here are for everyone. It doesn't matter if you're black or white, Jewish, Christian, atheist, if you are poor or rich. This is a place for every single member of our community. I strongly oppose the proposition. I strongly oppose outside influences coming into my community and trying to force a proposition on us where they don't even have an opportunity to vote because they do not live here. So I am very passionate about this. This library has raised my children. I've got two children in school. One's at the University of Rochester and will graduate in May with a degree in economics and brain cognitive sciences. She has been in this library since she was two years old when we moved here. My youngest daughter is a nursing student at Partridge. She has been in this library since she was born, from Miss Mouse Storytime to the meeting rooms that they were able to go to when they were in middle school and high school, so they could do their work projects, the little craft kits that you can pick up. This may be frivolous, but this library keeps our kids safe. It gets them off the street. It gives them a place where they have a safe space to sit, to read, to learn, to communicate, to work on prior school projects. It is not a dangerous environment. And as a parent who has raised her children in this library, I strongly disagree with Ms. Voice's observation or claim that this library is dangerous to our children. It is not. So many kids use this library. It is a safe space for so many people. And I just want to say I strongly, vehemently oppose the proposed proposition question. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Debbie Anderson Phillips. I live in Downers Grove. I also was not planning to speak, but the last two speakers have inspired me to get up. I think that what I'm most concerned about, most concerned after being at the town council meeting last week and about this meeting and about many library meetings that I've attended, and like our nation right now, we are an extremely divided people. We are people that feel passionately on both sides, on many sides of issues. The people who spoke, Kylie, who just spoke, feels passionately. I feel passionately. People that spoke before Kylie speak passionately. And I feel what is being ignored is that if this referendum goes through, it will divide our community. It will be an ugly, ugly, ugly fight. And there will be violent words spoken to people, both publicly and on their cell phones. And I would say perhaps even violence to people. This will tear our community apart for no reason. I'm pretty old. And years and years ago, when I was a little girl, lived in California, I learned about how communities are torn apart when my community, my parents' community, they were asked to break off the school board and have the school have a new high school. The high school that would be new was going to be all white and all middle and upper-middle class. Those children in my community would no longer go to the Pasadena High School that was largely mixed-race. It was a very ugly election. It tore the community apart. My parents were labeled and threatened, and something that stuck with me for these many years. So whatever, however you feel about this, I feel it's very wrong to bring up this referendum also for no good reason. We don't even allow... There's not a board member even coming up for consideration until 2026. We have a long time to think about it. It's not... It's fine to ask this question, should we elect our board, but we need to know what's going to happen after we decide yes or no. So I really hope that they keep this referendum on for now. Thank you.
Bill Nieberg, twenty-year resident of Downers Grove, former library board trustee member, infamous library card holder since 2006, for those of you who are curious. I'm going to start out by making an apology to Noel. Noel, on behalf of the other half of Downers Grove residents, we're glad you're here. We're glad you're bringing perspective from another area library on what works and that elected boards don't spell the end of the wonderful library services we enjoy here, which nobody argues. The letter from new president Topic to the village council was riddled with misinformation, and it must be addressed. I'm here to set the record straight and to send a message direct to the Downers Grove residents. There is no impact on operations from a simple advisory referendum. Or even if the advisory referendum was successful and there ended up being an elected board, it still does not have an impact on operations. The village council does not need to give you notice. You are a unit of village government. They can put an advisory referendum on the ballot without your permission or consultation. It is not necessary. There is no chaotic timeline. If this is added to the ballot, you will have four months to put your finger on the scale, which I'm sure you will do, before the real April election. We don't need the board of trustees to prepare a report. You're not being asked to respond or contribute to the referendum. It is for the voters. The point of a referendum is not to have you put your finger on the scale and influence the outcome. And this very much might be in the best interests of the Downers Grove residents. They may get the same wonderful services this library provides in a much more responsible way with respect to the expenditure of your tax dollars. The voters are smart and competent enough to figure out the cost-benefit equation of elected representatives for a seven-plus-million-dollar line item on their taxes. And they are definitely smart enough to know that electricity is not free. To the residents, trust nothing that you hear from this library board on this topic. It is notable that they point to a likely tax increase while simultaneously complaining about not having the chance or the time to understand the referendum impacts. No doubt, they will waste more of your tax dollars on one-sided opinions from their own legal counsel. I know the library budget and budget process well from my two years of work. Every one of the alleged cost increase and sky-as-falling implications could be mitigated by intergovernmental agreements. If they are even spun off as a separate entity, if they remain an entity with an elected board, there should be no impact. And if there are hidden costs today, like you're alleged for electricity, they should be unhidden immediately. Costs should be allocated where the costs are applied. And to the residents, there are plenty of good reasons for having an elected board. This is the only tax entity, tax levying entity, associated with your tax bill that does not have elected representatives, with the exception of the sewer board that is appointed by the DuPage County Board. And every other one of those boards is less than 1%. So every other line item in your tax bill is accountable to elected officials. There is no transparency on the appointment of library board members. We don't know who applies. We don't know who is selected from the applicants to interview. We don't know or have any line of sight to the deliberations or the interviews. And library board members, as I am intimately familiar with, can be removed via what can only be described as a kangaroo court. It is the ultimate example of bureaucracy versus democracy. Elected boards work fine in surrounding communities. There is nothing that is going to change about the operations or the services that the library provides simply by having elected representatives. The references to death threats. Leslie Sudowski-Fugit's Rest Breakless Histrionics about a six-month-old voicemail that has nothing to do with this referendum are immature and irresponsible.
Grab up your comment.
Yeah. This board and this library's reaction says everything you need to know. They are more interested in self-preservation than in doing what's right for the taxpayers and stakeholders of Downers Grove. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Sarah Vida. I didn't know I was going to be coming up here, but I'm here. And my job is a change management consultant. And one cornerstone of any type of change is you cannot shout from the mountaintop and expect people to change. You must meet people where they are. And there's just way too much to shout.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry. If you want real change, you can't shout from the mountaintop and expect words to change. You must meet people where they are. I don't hear that here. There's a lot of information that residents need to know before they go on this. We brought some up. We also learned, and I'm still very confused about a tax cap in 1993 that impacted those communities and why it might not make sense now to make that same decision. I'm completely confused. Our residents can begin voting on this February 20th. Let's be respectful to the residents of Downers Grove and give them enough time and information to understand if this is good. End of story. Thank you.
Janet Woodham, Downers Grove residents, I'm joining the long line of people who didn't expect to speak tonight, but hearing. Under any other circumstance, this proposition could be a joke. The Village Council has no authority to do what they say and put on the ballot to do. It is unclear to me, and no one in favor of this referendum has explained to me, what they intend to do with results. The Village Council cannot act on it because they have no authority. Are you going to accept a negative vote and just say, oh, okay, the village residents have spoken? What are you going to do with a positive result? You can't do anything with it because the authorities, this process has not followed the proper channel of reorganization of libraries. It is, under any other circumstances, silly and a waste of money. So I'd be interested to know what the expectation is at the end of the day when there's a result in, good or ill. And it makes no sense to me. So I'm sure there is more beneficial use of time than listening to public comments on things that can't happen. But I would also point out that, in my view, we've seen extraneous outside folks come in and raise all kinds of ruckus. And if, in an elected situation, that kind of thing, money flows wherever it goes. So I would expect much more outside interference with the way the village library runs and the elected village people run. So I don't think it's a good idea at all. I like having the running of the library performed by people who live in my village and without constraint or obligation to anybody who makes a donation to a campaign. So like I said, please let me know what the endgame is because I don't see a proper way to go forward, to conduct business, to do anything with respect to an election. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. The teen area, okay? I unfortunately am vertically challenged. My name is Mary Laffey. I've lived in Downers Grove, unfortunately not as long as some folks have. But I'm actually in library school right now, so this is a really exciting time for me and a very interesting time as well. My experience with this library has been that they are third places for everyone to come to read and relax and to work and feel as though they are, excuse me, at their home away from home. The librarians that I've interacted with are professional, respectful, empathetic, and kind, and extremely well-educated in their field of library and information science. Lifelong warriors themselves, these people encourage other members of our community to grow and learn through the materials, programming, and services that they provide. The materials that are made available at the library have been selected by professionals who are keenly aware of internal bias and really very much against censorship. They work hard to have their collections meet the needs of everyone, not just people who make their voices heard. These collections result in the social, economic, racial, and political diversity and identities of everyone who lives in, or, excuse me, everyone who visits or may visit the Downers Grove Library. My personal understanding of the decision to privatize the library or of this referendum, I don't fully understand. I hope to gain some insight later tonight. However, I am a little concerned about elected officials. I want to make sure that this is a process where we understand the election as well as the people currently in power and we make sure that they are not censoring materials and that they are giving everyone the freedom to read what they want to read. Removing stories and perspectives of those who may not like them doesn't make them go away, but it rather reflects our own prejudice. And so heartbeats, in essence, are the heartbeats, excuse me, libraries, I'm very nervous. Libraries, in essence, are the heartbeats of their community. You really grow unaware of the sound they make and the daily functions they provide, but once it stutters, like I am, or God-fermented stops, the silence can be deafening. So I personally believe that no matter whether this decision is made, and hopefully I get some more insight on what the impact of this decision could be, the library continues to provide a just incredibly important service to everyone in our community, not just the people who live here, but everyone. Thank you so much.
Do we have any other comments?
Ed Brainerd, resident of Downers Grove since 1953. I'm in full support of this referendum. It's been said before, this library operates under a $7 million budget with no eyes. Thus, we've seen things in this library suggested that we have a drag weed event, that we have an RGW report at the cost of almost $200,000 that says Downers Grove is a racist community. Well, I don't think anyone in this room would agree with that. But the library spent that kind of money because there's no oversight. There is no oversight in this library. The director operates with no eyes upon her. The Downers Grove residents who pay the taxes have a right, have a right to what goes on in this library. So I'm in full support. Further, there are individuals in this room who dare call out other individuals in this room, miss spawn. How dare you call us hate groups? With no proof, you're disgusting. Further, she obviously doesn't know that this library is unsafe because she can't find the incident reports. I've called on this for two years, Director. Where do you find incident reports? That's why she doesn't know the library is unsafe. Maybe one of these days you'll explain that to us. And again, it's disgusting to hear people call us out, to call us out by name. Noel Manley, of Indian descent, did you call him out? Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move on to trustee comments. Who do you want to begin?
I can't. First of all, the people are speaking. We've heard a lot in the last couple of weeks, and we're grateful for that. There's really been a lot of gaslighting going on around this whole issue about notice, about motive, about this not being an attack on the board and the staff of the library because if we're perceiving it as an attack, it's an attack. Things keep coming up that go back several years. Half of us weren't even on the board at the time. And the process for selection has changed. You're criticizing us about the selection process. That's for the village to deal There is a statutory process, several processes, for converting a municipal library to a district library under the Illinois Library Act. This board has not said we are objecting to looking at this. We have not said we're objecting to converting to a district library if that turns out to be in the best interest of the community. But it needs to take a measured approach. It is a complicated process. The statutes actually have mandatory language for when other forms of referenda are put forward. And the mandatory language is much more comprehensive, addressing election versus appointment and the taxation issues that go along with it. So I think, you know, if you ask a question the wrong way, you're not going to get a valid answer. If the council is really looking at getting valid information about what the community thinks, you've got to have a valid process and valid wording on your referendum. Bad process, bad question, bad results, not trustworthy. The statutory process is pretty complicated. It doesn't happen overnight. You know, I think we're probably willing to look at it. We haven't had a chance to really discuss it and vote on it at this point. There's also been some conversation that there is some magical way to come up with a new Illinois statute to create a whole new governance structure for the library that would be some kind of hybrid. And what happened in Aurora was thrown on the table as the example of that. And I do want to address what happened in Aurora because both staff and board have been talking to Aurora trustees and Aurora library staff to get a handle on it. A law was passed in Springfield that was not supported by either the Aurora City Council or the Aurora Library that would have set up a unique hybrid system under their Aldermanic system that would have been ward-by-ward representation with nine members on the library board. And that was all tied in to some things going on with a statewide gubernatorial campaign at the time. Neither the city council nor the library wanted to see that happen. In the interim, before that law actually was put on the books, the council and the library board sat down, following one of the statutory procedures, and negotiated a conversion. By the time the law actually took effect, Aurora had a district library. After years of neglect by the city government, they had had layoffs, they had program cuts, they had branch closures, all kinds of really negative stuff was going on, and nobody was So the idea that we can compare something that happened in the second-largest and most diverse, one of the most diverse cities in Illinois with Downers Grove, it's an apples and oranges situation. It's a red herring. I just wanted to clarify that, that the example of Aurora is just not viable in this situation. That law is sitting there with the words on paper, never took effect. The whole thing is moot. I think we do need to be given time to get our thoughts together on this, to create some materials that will give people pros and cons. We want to know those ourselves. The idea that this is not disruptive to our progress on our strategic plan, we're here tonight when we should have been at a board retreat. It's already been disruptive. And we'll be discussing a budget tonight because there are certain things you have to do when you go through this process. We're trying to follow the law. There are several ways for referenda to be put forth to do this. What the council is doing at this point is none of them. It's not illegal. They can do it. We've seen them do it before. It's fine. But it is irregular. And I think it disrespects the board that they have put in place in doing the job that we've been appointed to do. And that's why we've been taken aback by this. We are willing to look at all of the governance options. We want to do what's right by this community, but we have to do it with, under the statutory framework. One more thing, by the way, whether you have an elected or an appointed board, the job description of the trustee doesn't change. That's statutory also. And I thank you for your time. Those are the thoughts I have had over the last couple of weeks with this. I'm hoping that the council and our board can work together more closely regardless of whether there is a referendum right now or not, to make this a meaningful process so that we know whether we have the right governance structure. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. I'm also vertically challenged. I wear heels a lot. All right. Thank you all for being here. I have the honor of sitting on this board, these fellow trustees. You're volunteers. We are not here for personal agendas or to build our resumes or our political aspirations, but because we believe in the mission and the purpose of the Downers Grove Public Library. Each of us has a specific skill that was seen by village council, or in my case, by Mayor Barnett, that fulfill a need on this board. I was personally very excited about us as a board with its new members and this new year upon us, to continue to support the good work being done by the staff at DGPL, to continue achieving goals and progressing on our strategic plan, keeping an eye on the work plan as Julie and staff check off completed tasks and look forward to the next steps and reaching other goals. But now, we as a board and many staff members have had to stop all of our work and shift our focus to this non-binding referendum. Now, my fellow trustees are much better versed on the legalities of a non-binding referendum, and so they may be speaking on that tonight, but I'm going to take this time to make some personal comments. There's a few tenets I've always tried to live by. When you know better, you do better. We're always learning and growing. It's okay to be wrong. With more knowledge comes awareness, and with more awareness comes growth. We grow and we gain perspective. Fitting that part of the mission of Downers Grove Public Library is to grow and learn. As we learn more about the costs and ways shifting to an elected board and how it will affect our library and our community, I'm saddened to see that some commissioners are still pushing this narrative that it is good for Downers Grove. Focus on the work. We as a board and the staff at DGPL never stop doing the work. Here's where the frustration comes in. We as a board had to stop focusing on the work because we have been tasked to do focus on a non-binding referendum. As President Topic said at the council meeting, this feels personal. We want to continue the work, the work to continue keeping DGPL a five-star library. This is disruption of the work. This purposeful halt on our progress on our strategic plan feels intentional, and that is personal. Which brings me to my final point. Impact is greater than intent. To be very clear, these are my personal views. I heard several people at the council meeting and elsewhere say, the intent was probably not to put the library in this position. The intent was probably not to have the library be on the defensive, but the impact is always greater than the intent. The impact on the non-binding referendum, this proposal of a non-binding referendum, the way it was brought up and never discussed with the trustees, hearing on one hand, commissioners want to foster a stronger relationship, but on the other hand, there needs to be accountability, which doesn't make sense to me because we are accountable. We are accountable to the council. We focus our work and set our goals based on the needs of our community, using results found in our community-wide surveys, strategic planning meetings, and sessions. Have you seen the new teen area? But I digress. Back to impact. The impact that this proposal of a non-binding referendum on the DGPL staff, on this board, and on our community. The community clearly loves our library and asking that there be no changes and trusting council to choose trustees. This proposed non-binding referendum is creating division. Instead of allowing us to move forward and start anew and get to the work, some commissioners would rather cater to their self-interest. It was odd to hear them say they appreciate and value the library and acknowledge its value and its significance, yet they are asking for change. value and its significance, yet they are asking for change.
Evening, everyone. In fourth and fifth grade, my teacher would make us memorize and recite five or six stanza poems every week. It was difficult for me. I could test that aptitude tonight, but I won't. So I'll read my remarks, which are slightly over a page. Bear with me. In decision-making, I am pragmatic and a minimalist. A proposed referendum would initiate a process that is neither practical nor minimal. It is impractical to bring an advisory referendum that the council cannot act upon. It is impractical to move forward under the premise that Illinois will enact special enabling legislation to exempt Downers Grove Public Library from the statutory requirements associated with trustee elections. It is also a maximalist proposal. It intercedes in the governance decisions that are within our purview. It interferes in the library's budgetary and operational priorities. It creates uncertainty for our five-star library staff, who have experienced threats over recent years and who could pursue job opportunities in municipalities and districts with less or no chaos. It demoralizes trustees who voluntarily serve on the library board, one of whom has done so for decades. It preoccupies our mind over the holidays. It escalates divisions within our community. It conflates broad public interest and increased transparency regarding the council's trustee appointment process and the narrow interest of conservatives who seek to use the political process to advance their agenda. It perpetuates distrust between the village council and the board of trustees at a moment when both bodies speak about repairing trust. It creates a new polarizing campaign issue for municipal elections that has given space for one village council candidate to lash out at a current council member. It implies that a public library that institutes or offers equal access to resources and information to those with and without economic and political power should be governed by a small minority of the community who votes their preferences in municipal elections. Even if the public votes down an advisory referendum, as I expect they would, the disruption caused by this referendum would still cause tangible harm. I hope that the council considers those harms and decides not to bring the referendum. To be clear, I'm opposed to the referendum because public elections would likely produce a less representative library board of trustees than the current appointment process, and the proposal is not narrowly tailored to address the council's perceived, yet unspecified, issues of concern with us. I'm not entrenched. I'm not a deferential trustee who is acting on self-interest interest. None of us are. Any claim of political motive is projection. We are focused on the library's institutional integrity and good governance. A statement of opposition does not mean that I believe in resisting gravity. The referendum may move forward irrespective of our views. We can mount a proactive informational campaign to educate voters. We have effective ways to reach our community. We can wait and see how the new council reacts to the vote outcome. Anything but an overwhelming yes should mean this issue dies, and a council member told me that and agreed. To further pragmatism and minimalism in governance, I hope that it does. That's the end of my remarks about the topics for today, but I'd also like to say that foundation donations are being matched up to 5K through the end of December. I'd also finally like to say that my wife tees Shakespeare, so thank you for citing Shakespeare. There are other quotes from Hamlet, but I might remind a few village council members, such as "hoist by one's own petard." Thank you.
Yeah, mine are very, very short. And I also have to prepare my... Let me start by saying that I am deeply disheartened that none of the three council members nor the mayor who support the elected library board referendum are present here tonight. Despite their stated eagerness to collaborate with the library board, their absence raises concerns about their commitment and authentic intentions. This referendum is problematic because it was not developed in collaboration with the library board, nor approached in good faith. It has created unplanned work for library staff and trustees coming on the heels of a thorough strategic plan, planning process completed less than a year ago. If this referendum moves forward, the library will be forced to divert previously earmarked funds to educate voters, funds that could otherwise be used to support its core mission. For those who demand fiscal responsibility from the library, please recognize that using limited resources for a referendum imposed on the library is neither wise nor budgeted for, especially when the feasibility of such a scenario has yet to be determined. Opposition to this referendum has nothing to do with whether or not there's opposition to an elected board, but it has everything to do with the timing and execution of this referendum and if it's in the best interest of the public. I do want to thank the staff and my fellow trustees, especially our new president, for taking on this unforeseen and frankly unreasonable task.
I'm Dave Humphreys. I've been on this board longer than anybody else, but I'm not as literate as some. But I don't have prepared remarks, and I will be relatively brief, at least for me. First of all, I haven't heard anything from this group up front here that I disagree with. I believe the library board, which is a volunteer group of people who are here because they love the library, not because they, not for any other ulterior motive, and a group of people who have studied library law and library processes and how to help a staff develop and create and maintain an excellent library for the village of Downers Grove. Five-star library, number 10 in our budget class and so forth have been referred to. So I don't want to belabor that, but that is, I believe, what all six members of the library board believe. I personally was taken a bit aback by this referendum proposal. I still am a bit mystified as to exactly what problems it expects to resolve. The one's raised quite a lot is accountability. And I believe, without going into great detail, that the current process of appointing library board members, and I mention specifically the current process, which has been changed in the last year or two by the village council so that the library board members are appointed by the entire council, not just the mayor. And I don't mean to suggest that it was just the mayor, but it was a little heavier in that area, I believe, not to suggest that any of the appointments were improper either. So I'm not casting any dispersions. I'm just saying that the current process is pretty accountable in that the seven members of the village council are elected, and the seven members of the village council appoint the six members of the library board under Illinois law. The village council of Downers Grove also has the ability to remove a council member, as it has done twice in the last several years. If the community elects and has an elected library board, they only have an opportunity to remove a library board member every two years, which is something to keep in mind. The other thing I feel very strongly about, and I think all six of us up here at the table, we are willing to talk. We want to engage with the Downers Grove Village Council and attempt, and not attempt, but find out what the issues are. I'm going to read, I am going to read one thing, and this is something that I wrote to the village council. I can speak for all six library trustees that we are more than willing to meet together with the seven council members to raise, document, discuss, and likely resolve any issues which have come between us and impede us in our common goal of serving Downers Grove. That's us and the village council. We can begin these joint efforts immediately, and in fact, we are. But their process is going to be very difficult when, under the issue of a polarizing library referendum which is looming in the near future. That diverts us from the serious discussions of attempting to raise, resolve, document, and the issues. So I say again, let's talk. And we hope to do that as a group, and we are willing to start now.
I think I kind of said my piece at the village council meeting, and I don't have a lot of gas left in this particular tank. I will say, this has been incredibly disruptive. It was very unexpected. It continues to change. We started with a proposal to, with a referendum that by its own definition would create a separate independent entity, which would be a district. We've had the chance to, you know, weigh in, to get weigh in from our lawyer, who confirmed that under Illinois law, you cannot simply switch this board to an elected board. The village council can elect to become a different form of village council, and then they could have a different form of library. That's within their power to do. They don't have any power to just change us into another form of government with a different, with a different structure to it. So it started as creating a new entity, and then it turned into a vague idea of not creating a new entity, but just doing what has been referred to as the Aurora model. That would require an act from Springfield, and it would require additional steps after that. It wasn't done in Aurora after they went to the effort to amend the statute. And if someone put forth in front of me a compelling case for why an elected board would be superior to an appointed board, I would certainly look at that. I would think about that. No one has done that. All we have heard are very vague ideas about governance. And that's fine. We can talk about those things, we can think about those things. But there's people who actually study this. There's people who actually are law professors or, you know, or political science professors who have an awful lot to say on these subjects. When the Chicago Public Schools went through a process to convert from an appointed board to an elected board, it was a very long process. People had a lot to say on that, and it's a complicated issue that can have all kinds of other ramifications. And the idea that we can keep the five-star library, that everyone, even those who want this referendum to go forward, say that they agree with. The idea that you can, that it's a foregone conclusion, that you still get that if you change the way that the library is governed, I think there are very smart people who would take issue with that, who would say it maybe isn't quite so simple. So I don't know the answer to that question, and I won't know the answer to that question in such a short timeframe. And I don't think the public can be properly informed on that issue in the kind of timeframe that we've been given. And if the village council goes forward, we will do what we can do to educate the public on this issue because it will be our responsibility to do that. You'll hear in a little bit, we'll talk about what that looks like and what that might cost, and those are costs that we will have to incur that we otherwise would not have to incur. So this is absolutely a detraction from what we already had planned. I said, I said, I had said my whole piece, obviously. But, you know, there could, this is a discussion that is a perfectly acceptable subject to be talking about, that's being handled in a completely unacceptable and unprofessional, disorderly way that is not fitting this community. I was born in this town, my mom was. We go back a long way, and if you, that doesn't give me any right to anything, somebody who just showed up here. But I think I know a little bit about this community, and I think one thing it really values is having orderly, professional government. And this is not that. This is disorder, and it's chaotic, and it's being, it's being pushed forward on a very, very short time period. If people wanted to have that discussion and they wanted to put it on the referendum for April, the time to do that was last April, and no one has identified anything that's happened between last April and now that suddenly makes this an issue that we should have to deal with. I don't think it's too much to ask that if we want to have a discussion about this, we do it in an orderly fashion. And I'm going to stop repeating myself now because I continue to say the same thing over and over again. It's just the side of the frustration that I've had over this. So I sincerely hope that the village council will put an end to this, and if they want to have a discussion about anything, we are more than happy to have a discussion. We serve at their pleasure. So we are all uniformly here, happy to talk about anything that they would like to talk about. But you shouldn't initiate a discussion by putting a referendum on the ballot that asks whether an institution that most people think is pretty successful and has operated this way for over a century should just suddenly become something different. Of course, to all of us, that feels like they must have some problem with what we're doing and puts us in, you know, obviously, a very defensive posture, and for very good reason. And I'm sure if we put a ballot referendum on that said, for example, should there be more term limits on village council members? Or should the village, should we have a strong mayor form of government? Or something getting into the village council's own governance? Of course, there would be a reaction to that, and of course, you know, people would want to push back on that, or at least say, why are you rushing this through so fast? Right? So I think that's where I'm going to leave it on this subject. I want to make a couple other comments. I will ask, the public comment is going to be done in an orderly way, or it is not going to happen. So I'll just reiterate again, we're not going to interrupt each other. I think it would be better if we could try to not kind of direct comments at people in the audience, and there was some of that from a few people, and it's a little heated, and I understand that, and I think everybody should get a little leeway. But let's all please try to just tone that down, and definitely, we're not going to be interrupting each other. Last thing, on a totally different subject. We recently had the anniversary of Pearl Harbor. There was a great event here. I wasn't able to attend, but there was a great event last night about Pearl Harbor. I just wanted to thank the library for putting on that program. I want to thank our local veterans, especially our World War II veterans, and I think that's just yet another example of the kind of great programming we put on here. So with that, I'm going to conclude the trustee comments, and we will move on to our next agenda. Would anyone like to take a quick break? No?
Do you need a break?
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we take five minutes, and then we will come back? Okay? We're going to go ahead and resume. Next item is new business. I think we've sort of said what we have to say about the resolution itself. Does anyone feel a need to have any further discussion on any of those?
I just want to reiterate that I think the problem with this assuming arguendo that it's going to go forward is the language right now just doesn't give people any information on what we're really talking about. I would highly recommend that if it goes forward, there are very more comprehensive wording on the referendum as recommended. wording on the referendum as recommended for a non-binding referendum in the statute, mandated if it's a binding referendum. The format is there in the law, and I think that would give us a lot more information. And that's one of the things the Council said, is that they want more information about how people feel. That would give us more information.
So we did want to talk about budgeting for this potential referendum if it was to go forward. So Julie, I'm going to ask you to sort of high level to walk us through if we were to engage in an informational campaign to provide voters with information about the issue, and in a way that does not require our staff to significantly step away from the work they're already doing, which realistically means bringing in consultants or people to work on that with us. Can you, at a high level, just sort of walk us through what we're looking at?
At this point, we are estimating approximately $25,000 for the absolute minimum cost of an informational campaign. That would be a consult with our communications consultant on a strategy for the information campaign. It would be one additional mailer to all, to all of the households in our village, and additional pages in our March-April newsletter that we're already sending. Beyond that, if we were to actually use our communications consultant to put on that campaign without the staff being the ones to do it, that would occur at about $400 an hour, is their standard rate as a communications consultant. That could, could range tens of thousands of dollars depending on the level of the campaign. Also, at various times, we have talked about the idea of a governance consultant to put forth the pros and cons about elected versus appointed. The staff has already started identifying some of the professors that had weighed in on the Chicago Public Schools question about anointed or appointed or elected board members. And so to start thinking about who we might be able to engage if that were needed. And again, that we really don't know what that cost could be. It could be a few thousand dollars, it could be 10,000 dollars. We just don't know.
And if the referendum is done in a way that suggests a conversion to a district, what about someone to analyze kind of, you know, what, what all those issues would be, what the financial impact might be, hypotheticals of whether there are or are not intergovernmental agreements that address those things, none of which has been laid out? So to get our arms wrapped around that and inform the public on it, is that, what are we looking at for something like that?
That's probably in that same several thousand dollars to have them perform an initial study on the cost of going to a district. And to, depending on the level, if we were going pure finance, it would probably be a little less. If we were also having attorneys weigh in on the feasibility of intergovernmental agreements of some of the kinds that have been speculated about here tonight, that of course would cost more.
May I interject something here, too, just because I don't know who, who all has come in at what point in some of this. The reason we're talking about this coming out of library budget is because when the Council put this on the table, even though it's their referendum, they've said, the library's going to bear the cost of it. Which was another thing, we all went, say what?
Right. No, and that's, thank you. Yeah, so this isn't village staff who's going to put the materials together or deviate from their work plan in order to accomplish it. It's been made clear that if anyone is going to try to sort these issues out and inform the public about them in advance of the referendum, that would need to be done. Other questions about this aspect of it?
The one other thing that popped into my brain is also the expedited timeline of this, of any informational campaign. If the Village Board votes to on January 7th, as they have indicated at this time, that they would put this on their agenda to vote on January 7th. The first day of early voting is in February. That is not four or five months. That has been suggested by some folks. But rather, that informational campaign, because we've already seen the wording of the referendum change significantly from when it was first put on the Village Council agenda to where it is today. So informational campaign would have to happen, all of the planning within that very tight timeline.
Six weeks.
Right. Six weeks. Yes, Dave?
I just want to clarify, in my own mind, by verbalizing this, I think, see if I'm on the right page. I believe I am. This is Illinois library law. I haven't read that law. I've read quite a bit of it, actually, but I don't believe you can understand quite all of it. It seems to me that the conversion process, if it were to a library district, would first require either a petition from the electorate or an action by this board. If the electorate petitioned it, they could petition it to the Village Council, but the Village Council would not be the organization that would act on it. It's been mentioned that the Aurora model, and the Aurora model is basically that we could, we or the village government or any group of citizens could petition or could go to their legislators, senators and representatives in Springfield, and request that they change this law. And one of the things that was done, the thing that was done for Aurora was basically they changed the Aurora model from an elected, from an appointed board to an elected board, and they didn't change much else. They did change some things, but they didn't change too much else. Somebody made the point to me that, well, if we go to Springfield, we can change anything we want, right? As long as Springfield goes along, and the governor does go, and we have to sign it as well. And that is all very true. And if there was reasonable agreement between the various parties, meaning the electorate and the village government and the Library Board, the village, the state legislature might entertain such a discussion. Barring that kind of agreement, they probably wouldn't. But then, following that action, then the courts get involved, because they have to implement the law, and they would have to, there's a long list of things that would have to be accomplished before the thing would actually take place, and probably at least a couple of years, if not more. Did I say anything that's wrong, or is anybody wrong?
No, I think...
It's not the court who does the administrative rules, it's the Joint Committee, Joint Committee on Administrative Rules that make the rules that implement the law, and they have their own statutory process that takes a set amount of time as well, including a public comment process.
Yeah. And so that's if the legislature made the decision.
The current law is, you're either a municipal library, the way that we are right now, or you convert to a district.
Yep.
Because that Aurora law never took effect.
Right.
It was an exercise in futility, and nobody really even knows who was pushing it, because it was not even the city council or the library board.
Besides, the Aurora law implemented some sort of an Aldermanic system.
Yeah.
And we don't have that in Downers Grove, which is another key point. Some people have mentioned that Westmont and some other communities have elected boards, and that is because they do not have a commission form of government. They have an Aldermanic form of government. So if the Village of Downers Grove wanted to convert from a commission form of government to an Aldermanic form of government, part of that process would be that we would then have an elected Library Board. But I don't think they're going to do that. So I just wanted to clarify, for me, and maybe for a couple of other people, what the options or processes are. But we don't know what the village is intending to do yet.
Got it. So I don't think we need to vote on, you know, formally approving a budget to go forward on this, but if anyone has more questions for Julie, or, you know, thinks we shouldn't engage in informational campaign, or, you know, has anything to say on that that we should talk about?
No, because we aren't quite sure what the educational campaign would be yet, because we don't know what the referendum question might be, or even if there will be one. I just wanted to comment briefly and to say that some might say, well, why do we need a communications consultant when we have people on our library staff that might be able to do that? And the point is that the people on our library staff have been hired and are budgeted for running the library in its present form. If we take them out of that role and put them into a totally different role, the library loses ground real quick. And I, as a Library Trustee, am responsible for maintaining this library, and I can't do that.
And there is a little different skill set with someone who is organizing this kind of informational campaign compared to publicity on library operations and programs.
So I'm just saying that to say, I support the process that's been selected, that's been suggested here at this point. We just need to fine tune it once we find out what the realities of the educational campaign would be.
Okay.
And we'll do that when the time comes.
Any other discussion on this, and then that's it? I think we're done with the referendum question tonight, yes?
Yep.
Okay. So next on our agenda is executive session for discussion of the employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee. Is everyone good with continuing to do that tonight?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, before we did, I had one other hand. I just, I want to just explain to everybody what we were supposed to be doing tonight instead. Every year, for this meeting, we have speakers or consultants come in on various topics as sort of a board retreat and board development type of activity. That's why the normal sort of parts of the meeting about consent agenda or approving expenditures, that, we do that in January instead of doing it in December. So that's what we were supposed to be doing, and I just wanted Julie to just briefly explain what it is we were supposed to be doing tonight that we are not doing because we are doing this.
We were supposed to be having a team building session and a learning session about board roles and responsibilities, governance, Robert's Rules of Order, all parliamentary procedure, all those wonderful kind of basics, and with a little team building thrown in. The consultant that we were working with is Kathy Parker. She's a retired library director. She also wrote the book on libraries. She was the co-author of the Library Director's Toolkit, published by the American Library Association. She is, she is a direct, she had more than 30 years' experience as a library director. Now, as a consultant, she does interim library director work. She is basically the troubleshooter. If you're a library that's had really bad issues and you're without a library director, Kathy's the one you call in to fix it.
To be clear, that is not us.
That's not us. But she is also an amazing consultant who has done board development with libraries around the country because of her authorship of Library Director's Toolkit. So we were supposed to have our session with her. And then Adult and Teen Services Manager Van McGary and Marketing and Communications Manager Cindy Katry were going to do a brief session, training the board on our EDI decision-making tool, which is a, basically a decision-making flow chart to make sure that we are making decisions in as inclusive a way as possible, and training the board on how to do that.
So when we talk about the disruption to the work that we would otherwise be doing, that's a very tangible example of that, that it's a function of the very unplanned way in which this went down. And now I'm going to stop talking about that.
Basically, our Library Board was going to go back to school for a month. Learn how to effectively govern.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay. Can you, I think you have to recite out big round of words.
Okay, here. To discussion for appointment of employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee.
Second. Do we need to roll call that?
Trustee Gignani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia?
Yes.
Trustee Slater?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
President Toppin?
Yes.
And we will work with Julie to set up a time at a later date to review your evaluation. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I think we can voice file that, yes?
Actually, we don't even need to. It's your meeting, you can say, and we are adjourned.
And we're adjourned.